Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council Meeting for Monday, May 5, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. I would like to make recognition of all members present, including our city administrator, Bohenko, and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is changing us, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to General Item 4 this evening, there is nothing under the General. Item number five is Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone. Moving on to Item 6, and that is Public Comment. If you would like to address the council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address.
Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Yanni. I reside at 25 Miranda Circle in Saco. I am the Chair of the Saco Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and I had a letter to present to you this evening in regard to support for the development of Pepperell Park. So I'd like to just read that quickly into the record. So, dear members of the Saco City Council, on behalf of the Saco Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we are writing to express strong support of the proposed development of Pepperell Park. With the relocation of the Fairfield School, this centrally located site presents a unique opportunity to restore the space to its original purpose as a public park. This project honors the land's history and meets a growing need for a high-quality accessible green space in the heart of our city. We believe Pepperell Park can become a true destination, much like Boston Common or Central Park, a place that draws residents and visitors, supports community events, encourages recreation, and adds vibrancy to our downtown. It's a chance to create a signature space that reflects Saco's identity, past and future. We urge the council to approve this transformative project. In doing so, you invest in a bold, community-centered future, one that honors our past while thoughtfully designing the city we want to become. Thank you for your service and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you.
May I present that?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to Item 7 this evening, that is the Approval of the Minutes for April 28, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards. Any discussion or comments on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion on the minutes passes 7-0. Okay, now moving on to the consent items this evening, there is one item, and that is the council's schedule for June through August of 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion or comment on the schedule? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to Item 9, there are two action items this evening. The first one is a public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 municipal budget and the school budget, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 24, 2025, the city administrator presented a recommended fiscal year 2026 budget. The school board voted on their budget, and it was subsequently moved forward to the council for consideration. The council met with departments and agencies to review and discuss budgets in April. I move to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 city budget and the fiscal year 2026 school budget.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Public hearing is open. If you would like to speak to the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hewitt, 380 Main Street, Saco, Maine. I'm also a trustee of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum, not only to emphasize some of the items that Sophie Smith brought up a couple of weeks ago, but also to expand on the idea that the Saco Museum and the Dyer Library support other entities within the town, not just the people and the kids and seniors. They do provide active places for adult daycares to go to, printing and computer services, and work areas for residents, in addition to children's programs after school and on holidays. They are hosting meetings and organization meeting places for things like Age Friendly Saco and other town organizations, just in some, supporting the library and the Saco Museum as a worthwhile entity for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Kane Kirby. I live at 8 Cartier Circle, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum as a resident of Saco, but also as the president of the Board of Trustees. In late 2023, when our longtime director retired, the board had the opportunity to evaluate how the organization might best meet the needs of our evolving and growing community and the leadership that it would require to get us there. In consultation with the staff and community members, we had three priorities: increase the presence of the Dyer Library, Saco Museum, and the community through partnerships and outreach; ensure that the staff was organized to meet the needs of the community now and in the future; and to evaluate the building and look for better utilization of space. With renewed energy and leadership, we met our priorities. Over the past year, the Dyer Library, Saco Museum has built strong relationships with the city of Saco, Saco Main Street, Age Friendly Saco, Thorn Academy, Seashore Trolley Museum, and other community groups. Through improved communication on our website, online calendar, and newsletter, the staff have expanded programming and events to directly meet community needs. As far as the building and its spaces, the board invested heavily in the needed infrastructure to upgrade the Wi-Fi. The Dyer Library, Saco Museum received a grant to install private remote working and meeting areas, which are now underway. By cleaning up the building and rearranging collections, they are now more comfortable reading nooks to settle with a good book. I'd like to thank the city of Saco for its continued support. The Dyer Library, Saco Museum continues to look for innovative ways to partner with the city of Saco and its community leaders to meet the needs of a growing community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeff Coburn. I live at 22 Plymouth Drive. I am a new trustee on the board for the library, and I have two kids who attend school at Saco. I'm a believer that a healthy community requires having a healthy third space. You've probably heard the concept of this, where you have work, you have home, and you have the third place that's not a place that you have to pay to enrich yourself with society and with community. I believe the Saco Library serves that for this community, and I believe that with the under the leadership of Sophie and with the adequate budget, that it will continue to improve that role. So I urge you to support Sophie with adequate budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, not any seeking anyone seeking recognition. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city set the vote on the fiscal year 2026 city budget and the fiscal year 2026 school budget for May 12, 2025.
Motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston? Any discussion or comment from council at this time? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, Item B is a public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 through 2030 capital program, and that is Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 24, 2025, the city administrator presented the FY 2026 budget, which included as Section 7 of the overall budget, the five-year capital program. The finance director notes that the final cost for 2026 equipment may come in slightly higher or slightly lower than the figure set out in Section 7 due to rapidly fluctuating market conditions, and therefore, the suggested motion includes an allowance to the account for these disparities of up to but not more than 10%. I move to open the public hearing on the FY 2026 FY 2030 capital program.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards? Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Councilor Johnston?
I move to close the public hearing, be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the FY 2026 through FY 2030 capital program for May 12, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards? Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Councilor Johnston?
I move to close the public hearing, be it ordered that the city council set the vote on the FY 2026 through FY 2030 capital program for May 12, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch? Any discussion or questions on this comment on this item? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. Okay, that moves us on to Item 10, and that is New Business, and these are items that we have set for council discussion prior to the setting of the budget for next week. So the first item we have is Item A, and that is the review of the resolution prior to adoption of the fee schedule for fiscal year 26.
Your Honor, if I might?
Yes.
I have both the interim finance director and the finance director designated coming up. My thought would be is as we go through these resolutions to review before the vote next week, that we try to answer any questions any of the council members have. We have new council members, so we wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to ask questions. The first one, of course, we're starting off with is the is the fee schedule, and I'll turn it over to Director Henderson.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
I think it was on to begin with. So for the city fee schedule, there were not a ton of changes for 2026. I think all of you have a copy of the fee schedule in front of you. It's pretty straightforward. I don't think there's a whole lot. The police department had a few increases. Fingerprint fee went up slightly. Outside police assignments went up slightly. And then the ambulance fees went up in a couple of places for treatment with no transport.
Excuse me, if I might, I just want to remind the council that we had talked about this last year, and because of the way it was being interpreted, some people were getting $1,000 bills for this treat no transport. So we, the city council decided to suspend it until this year, until we got more clarification as how we can move forward on this. So we are, the chief has put forward $100, $150. How much is it?
$150.
Yeah, $150, and that pretty much is what it was.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on down to building construction, probably the only notable change was to the solar panel construction fees. They've just been simplified to $7 for the first 100 panels and then $4 for each additional panel, just to simplify that fee. There were no other fee changes until you get to Chapter 147, which is the multifamily dwelling units, and those fees for registration per unit went up $5, from $25 to $30. The five-year inspection went from $150 to $200. And then Chapter 173, seasonal property rental, the renewals, $25 to $30, inspections, the five-year follow-up inspections, $150 to $200. So minimal changes there. And then no other changes until you get down to burial permit, which went from $20 to $25. The tower and wreckers, this is the towing rates, they did go up quite a bit. Daytime towing rates have gone up to 160, with the nighttime also at 160, and then towing from a crash scene was added at 175, and then use of the winch and tow was added for 200. But as you know, everybody's charging more. And then there were no changes on down, no increase to the building rental fees, no increase the athletic field fees. The largest portion of the increases are to parks and wrecks, and that is for their regular programming and fees. As you can see, they're minimal for both resident and non-residents. I will not read all of them to you unless you would like me to. There's quite a few, but as you can see, they're pretty reasonable and in line with what I think you would expect for an annual increase. Transfer station, no increase. No proposed changes for the planning fees. And that is the end of the fee schedule.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, councilors, do we have any questions, comments on any of the fee changes? Councilor Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the towing increases, is that all generated from the people who are doing the towing versus we're not trying to add another level of punitive penalty to someone who needs to be towed?
That is correct. That is from the, it's not the city charging that, it's the towing company charging that fee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. It looks as though the fees are, again, this is just by perspective, it looks like we're aligning the fees of Chapter 173 with Chapter 147 to make them consistent, but my question would be that, to my knowledge, I could be wrong, but since we passed the ordinance in 2017, I don't think we have officially or fully implemented the program. My personal opinion would be that if we're going to now increase these fees and we do not have the program in place, I think the full review of Chapter 147 should probably occur before increasing anything. So that would be a future amendment for me to just keep the current fees until a later date.
City Administrator, if any of the councilors have changes?
Yes.
Do you want them submitted throughout the week?
Sure. I have, council members have submitted some amendments. Be appreciated if those amendments could be sent to me by Wednesday of this week, no later than Thursday. What we're, I'll be working with the mayor tomorrow is to determine a format that we'll use. For that, we have some already that are in, so I want to try to make this as smooth as possible in terms of how we're going to go about the votes. Again, like I've said, the night of the vote, there certainly can be amendments made on the floor, which is fine. It's just that we'll take a little more time to make sure we have everything in order so that we have the right numbers in the right resolutions, so we make sure we know what we're voting for.
Okay, great. So, Councilor Johnston, if you want to put that in amendment, removing that pending future review of Chapter 147? Anyone else? Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is more of a question for the city administrator because it pertains to the ambulance fee. I remember, aside from the, what the folks were being billed last year, of course, that was really half of the debate. And the other half of the debate was essentially a lot of the insurance companies no longer carrying or covering that fee. That's actually why it became really more of an issue as opposed to the actual monetary amount. But that being either here or there, that's more for the historical context. My question is, if folks, fixed income, low income, no income, if they have a situation where they have a no visit and there's a hardship situation, can they apply to you to have the fee waived?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make clarify that. And certainly if that was, if that's known as, if it's an option, that, you know, you have that ability, I think as a good, not only as a good public relations, but also goes to show that we're not trying to, you know, beef up the budget, you know, based on these fees though. But you only apply them where they're, where people can reasonably pay. But it should be known that we're not going to, you know, hurt anyone financially if they have a situation like this. I thank you for being open about that though, because I think that speaks to us doing this for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, doesn't look, I think they're all set with the fee schedule. So again, if you have any additional that you might want to see changed or any amendments, please get them to the city administrator this week. Is there a counselor who would wish to be the resource for this? Counselor Edwards? Thank you. Okay, as the city administrator stated, item B is the review of the resolution prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 Water Resource Recovery Department budget. And we do have Director Carter on staff. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Carter. So I see we have a 14.7% increase in the sewer fee. I assume that's to start the bond repayments for the new treatment plant. And I'm just wondering if you can help remind me what we're seeing for the future. Is this a one-time increase? Is it going to slowly step up over time? How are we looking at that?
Well, originally, we did three subsequent rate increases to pay for the bond, I mean, for the, pay back the bond. But what's happening now, I think we need to start a capital program for costs that are going up. So I'm just trying to get one started. We've never had one before. We've been probably a little overly reliant on impact fees, and I'm just not so sure how strong those things are going forward and increases in even the project. I think we just want to make sure we're going to be covered with this one. That was about 9% of the increase.
But we should anticipate increases again in subsequent years as the bond repayment starts in full?
No, we're all set on the bond payment right now. So we've, we've already set a fund up for that. So we're setting aside money for that, and we have some money set aside from TIF for that. So what's happening, we still haven't got all of the project bid out yet. So we've got most of it, but we've still got solid handling to do. So we want to just make sure we have enough money to finish that off in the next couple of years. We're scheduled to be done, major construction by December 26, and we should be pretty much done in 27. So we was hoping maybe we could get another grant or two to cover that, but the way the climate is right now, I'm not quite so sure that that's going to happen. So we just want to make sure we have enough to finish the project.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, likewise, and I think you just answered this, but, so the creation of that capital reserve, that's coming out of user fees and not the general fund?
Right, that's coming out of user fees, right.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't think we're seeing anyone. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Counselor Hewitt, this is in your ward. Ward, would you like to be the resource for this? Okay, thank you. Okay, item C is the review of the resolution prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 municipal budget. Andy?
Again, going forward, this is the overall adoption of the budget for the municipal side. And this is where any of your amendments would come into play. So we have, you can see the attached ad that we had put in the paper and, excuse me, the amount of money that's being utilized for municipal services.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions or comments? Everyone set? Okay. That was a quick one.
Do you have somebody else coming up?
All right, is there anyone who would like to be the resource and read this one? Counselor Gunn? Okay, item D is the review of resolution prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2026-2023 capital program. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the capital program? Okay, looks like everyone is set with that. Is there a counselor who would like to be the resource? Counselor Johnston? Okay, next item. Item E is the review and resolution prior to the council approving school budget for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026. We do have Superintendent Ray and Assistant Superintendent Parkhurst here with us for any questions or concerns regarding the school budget. Counselor Berman? Superintendent, would you like to step forward?
Just a really general question about the, and excuse the double word here, but the state of state funding as well as federal funding and how confident we are in the, in the state portion of the revenue as well as any federal monies.
So on the state side, I would say I'm fairly confident. But on the federal side, I think that there would be a lot of uncertainty that happens in this world. But look, at the end of the day, legislators and representatives at the federal level from all over the country need to go back to their home districts and look at their taxpayers in the face if there's going to be a major reduction in federal funds, which will affect every school in the country here, Texas, California, the South. And so I struggle to think that's going to happen. We've been in communication with Senator Collins' office and Senator King's office. And at the end of the day, all we would be doing is transferring a tax onto local property owners in every single state, not meeting federal law or decreasing services significantly for children. And I struggle to think that our representatives inside of Congress are going to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Jeremy, when I was in undergraduate school in accounting, the, my professor always says, you don't want to deal with an accountant who's out of balance, okay?
Okay.
I got a little balancing question for you.
Sure.
And I just need some help. I'm sure it's there. I just can't see it. In the resolution, your total sum of $57,274.09, at least on the surface, doesn't tie out to the fiscal year 26 proposed budget you gave us the night, the first night. And I'm sure there's probably something that's happened in between.
Do you have one of those right in front of you? I don't have that one.
And Jeremy, I don't want to put you on the squad. You can answer this question later if you want to give a stab at it now.
Thanks.
It said $56,529.672, I believe, the night of the presentation. And then in our resolution, we're about...
$57,274.
Yeah, with almost $750,000 difference. And I'm assuming that, I know there were some things in your original presentation that were in flux, and that could have been the answer. And again, I don't... Thank you. Okay. All right, you're answering my question here. All right, there it is. There it is. I'm good. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Would you like me to explain?
Well, I think I can go back and go through it and find out where we're at. If you want to give us just a general idea, that's great.
So basically, what happened is health insurance, we had put 10,000, 10% into the budget. Our health insurance rate came in at 13.5%. And so as a school committee, since we had kind of put a number forward that we felt reasonably confident in, and the good work of announcing that we were going to be like around 1% for a community increase, we felt like we would like to look at ways of how to accomplish that same number without changing taxation. So a couple of things happened. One, we started to look a little bit more deeply at what our fund balance was and could there be some one-time costs that are taken out of that. And so what we've done is we used additional fund balance to offset the insurance piece. We added, we had a couple of extra positions in our budget that were based off ELL, but not fully understanding what the impact of the hotel closure will be, whether families will find homes in our community or not. There was about $142,000 worth of positions that we chose to take out of fund balance as well and put those in a contingency piece that we would only hire those positions based off what the number of ELL students would be in the fall after we go through the closure of the hotel. So that money would be only accessed with, you know, I think it's three-fifths of the school committee vote or two-thirds or whatever that magic number is. Then we had a conversation with Don Roth, and I think we, on the school department side, feel extremely positive about our collaboration. And we had some capital projects in there, but we are also a little bit unsure about how tariffs would hit us and if that could have an impact on any of the projects that we have or in any of the technology purchases that we wanted to do. And so we added an extra $150,000 out of fund, out of fund balance into the capital items piece, just in case that would work. The other piece that we've been pretty excited about is the speaker and intercom system that you put into the classrooms so that students can hear that very well. It also has part of the program that a student who spoke a different language would be able to, the teacher would be able to use their, their kind of microphone and language. And if the student was on an iPad or their computer, it would automatically through AI translate the teacher's spoken word into their foreign language. Now, while we certainly don't want to have students sitting with, in front of iPads only hearing it that way, there are times during the school day we found that they would have better instruction to be able to use their home language. And so going through this piece, we've put half of a project into, do the classrooms, and then the next year, we will complete the project throughout the school. This will be a similar project to what we have in our new buildings. And so as we look at that kind of software and equipment that someday all of our students pre-K through eight would have that in their classrooms. Even with all of that, the other piece that we're pretty excited about is probably seven or eight years ago, the council was kind of promised that there would be a million dollars worth of Medicaid billing. And we're pretty happy to project that after working over that over the last four years, we have billed over $850,000 at that point and received almost $700,000 cash in hand. So we feel like that progress is there. So we've upped some of that expected revenue a little bit. And then this would still leave us with a fund balance of over $1.7 million. Additionally, in this budget, when you look at the end of this year, you will see us being probably pretty revenue high in this upcoming budget, based on the fact of the increased main care billing. But we've also, now that we've had the bond anticipation note come in, we've been able to pay ourselves back for all the accumulated costs over the last several years for the building project. So you're going to see a lot of that money coming back into the school's fund balance, just like you'll be able, we'll be able to take the, and pay back the property piece through that piece. So financially, we see ourselves, knock on wood, being in very good shape. And you'll see in the, in the memo that that really puts us on pace to be able to think about the future capital project at Saco Middle School of getting rid of that last portable, looking at fuller integration of our special ed students throughout the school by transfer, by having that building, looking at what is called the H-wing in that building, and really kind of renovating that piece that would all be able to come out of fund balance was our goal without hitting kind of a new amount through the budget cycle. So we feel like we're on our way for that.
All right, thank you very much. I knew there was an answer to the question, and I appreciate the detail. And I'll go through this. I'm sure it'll be fine. And if I have any other questions, I'll direct them to you through our city administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Okay, not seeing anyone on that.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a counselor willing to be a resource? Counselor Berman? Okay, next up for item F, and that is the review of resolution prior to council approving additional local funds for the school budget fiscal year 2020, I'm sorry, whoops, yes. Additional local funds for the school budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Do we have any questions or comments on this one? Okay, not seeing anyone. Do we have a resource willing to speak? Counselor Hewitt? Okay, that now takes us to item G, and that is the review of resolution prior to council approving adult education budget fiscal year 2025-2026. Any questions regarding the adult education budget? Okay, not seeing anyone. Do we have a counselor who's willing to take that as a resource? Counselor Parks? Okay, now takes us to item F, and that is the review of resolution prior to council setting the fiscal year 2026 property tax due dates and the interest rates. Any questions or concerns on this one? Okay, not seeing anyone. Council resource? Counselor Hatch? Okay, item I is the review of resolution prior to council reconfirming the authority to apply tax payments to the oldest outstanding tax. Any questions, comments? Okay, not seeing anyone. Is there a council resource willing to speak? Counselor Edwards? Okay, item J is the review of resolution prior to council reducing captured value percentages of the transit-oriented municipal development and tax increment financing district. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns on the TIFs? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this question really applies to all of the TIF amendments that are coming up. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And this question really applies to all of the TIF amendments that are coming up.
Would you like, we do have Economic Development Director, Dusharansh, with us this evening. Is it a question directed to her or administration?
I think it's a simple question, so whoever, whoever wants to answer it. One of the things I noted about the city administrator's presentation to create a deputy city administrator is that a portion of the city administrator salary, as well as a portion of the deputy city administrator salary, are covered by TIF districts. And I'm wondering if we're maximizing the utilization of TIF funds for that, because as we know, right, part of the purpose of this is our TIF account balances have gotten high, which is inefficient for our property taxes. But if we can utilize it, then it protects those funds and actually serves the city. So that's the nature of my questions. Are we maximizing the use of these funds towards salary?
Well, the thing is, let me ask Director Dusharansh to come forward, because there's certain levels that we can use, but we have to be careful.
Good evening. That is correct. When it comes to utilizing TIF dollars for other departments, they have to be prorated, and you can only use a percentage of it. And that's why the percentage is the way that it is. For my salary, for Tori's salary, it's one-hundred percent, because that's the department we work for.
So it's a percentage of the job efforts that's directed towards economic development of TIF districts, more or less?
Correct.
Thank you.
The other thing to just bring up is that there are ways eventually that we can utilize the TIF funds for other capital projects. And that's something we review every year as to what we can...
The majority of our capital projects are funded through TIFs.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And just from my perspective, in my time on council, we spent the first few years really trying to build up our TIFs in order to shield the money, you know, and protect some of our ED-279 formula and the state subsidy there. And now we've reached a point where our TIF accounts are not being utilized well. And so we're putting some funds back into the general fund, which is kind of a reverse course of it. So I'm just looking for ways to increase utilization of those accounts.
I don't, when you look at it, it's not so much as far as on not utilizing the TIFs to the best of the benefits. It's the fact that there are ten TIF districts, and the real estate in those districts are substantial. And within those districts, mind you, the TIFs are done based on value. So the more construction that's going on in those districts, the more we're sheltered as far as value. So we are, we are looking at ways, just as you stated, on how we can utilize, and the best way of utilizing those TIF dollars. When we're looking at capital projects, we also have to look at and be mindful of the staff time to be able to put those projects together. Could we do downtown sidewalks? Absolutely. That can all be paid for from TIFs. So when it gets into the infrastructure things, we just have to be creative on as we move forward. If we're looking to do housing, can we utilize TIF dollars for housing? Absolutely, to help offset that. Our programs within our grants, as I've stated, have been tremendous, and we're utilizing those funds to help offset that cost. Our gateway in looking at the Main Street coming in, again, we're looking at TIF dollars for that. Our wayfinding signs, it's all TIF dollars for that. So there are ways that we are trying to create that. But again, it's that value that continues to go up, and that's what's being kind of captured.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think just following up on that, it's something we need to look at as a staff in the city council approaching the next fiscal year for the twenty-seven budget. I think it's going to be important for us to go through and see where we can utilize the TIF funds. The values have gone up because of a revaluation that we've had. So we'll be, I think it'll be important, I think it's a good question to ask, and that we should look at it for fiscal year twenty-seven.
No, I appreciate that. And I'm just, just making sure that we're maximizing our immediate use now. As you know, I have substantial interest in infrastructure projects and kind of preparing us for the anticipated growth over, you know, the coming decades. And I think, you know, we will continue to utilize TIF funds for that as we are now. But I just want to make sure we're not leaving money on the table that we could be using. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding TIFs? Not seeing any. Is there a council resource willing to take this one? Councillor Hatch? Okay, moving on to item K, and that is the review of resolution prior to council reducing captured venture percentages of the downtown municipal development and tax increment financing district. So this is the downtown TIFs. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this one? Okay, not seeing anyone. Is there a councillor willing to take this one? Councillor Johnston? Okay, and the last one is item L, and that is the review of resolution prior to council reducing captured value percentages of Park North Municipal Development and the Tax Increment Financing District. Any questions or concerns regarding this one? Councillor Johnston?
This is a first-time return, correct? I don't recall returning money to the general fund last year from Park North TIF.
Yes, this is the first year that that's happened with Park North. And it's us trying to spread out the return over the TIFs so that every TIF district maintains enough money to cover the expenses assigned to that TIF district.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Is there a council resource for this? Councillor Gunn? Okay, that completes the list for the approval next week of the budget. Moving on to item eleven, that is the administrative update. City Administrator Mahanko?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, next Monday, there will be the adoption of the various resolutions that we just went over. Again, I would ask that if you have some amendments, please send them to me, and I'll put together a format that we can follow to move those along. Also, good news that last week, Governor Mills had announced that the city of Saco and the town of Old Orchard Beach have been selected to receive a joint Community Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant of a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So we're very pleased. There are some other municipalities that are involved with this as well. But I think this is going to help us as we go forward with our coastal resiliency. Also, I just wanted to advise the council that we have hired a deputy chief of training and prevention. And so we're, we're really excited about him coming aboard. Matthew Duros as the new deputy chief of training and prevention for the Saco Fire Department, effective June second, twenty-twenty-five. He has a tremendous amount of experience in the field, and we're very pleased to have him. I want to commend the fire chief. He's had a lot of things to put together as it relates to staffing. And I think we're moving in a very positive direction on, on fire staffing. I think that's it. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, not seeing any. Moving on to item twelve, council discussion and comment. Do we have any councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the council and the public's knowledge, I've asked the city administrator to prepare an amendment that we may do as part of the budget, or perhaps later. I remain interested in creating some sort of capital or designated fund account to support active transit initiatives, as well as pedestrian safety initiatives in the city. The purpose of this is the same as it was two years ago when I proposed it, to start allowing the city to invest in active transit, sidewalks, bike paths, other human-powered transit, as well as increase safety at intersections for pedestrians and bicyclists. We have a substantial undesignated fund surplus this year, and the purpose is to move some of that surplus into that fund that could be used to incentivize such projects, as well as serve as a matching funds for grants. If anybody has any questions about my initiative or goals on that, I'm happy to talk about it over the course of this next week. I've also asked for several smaller amendments for some of the supported entities. In particular, I was struck by the fact that federal funding for our food pantry has been decreased. So I want to increase the Saco food pantry. I'm also seeking reductions in a couple of their smaller supported entity budgets. Thank you.
Your Honor, if I might?
Yes, please.
I did talk about this with Councillor Berman, and also I've talked with the mayor and other council members. One of the things that I think would be important is to take any additional money that's from the unassigned fund balance that exceeds what we need to keep in accordance with the ordinance, take that and put it into what we would call committed fund balance. And if, let's say, for example, you would put five-hundred-thousand dollars and to move it over to committed fund balance for what you described, the only ones that can spend that money is the city council, because it would be in a committed fund balance. So, for example, if you put aside the five-hundred-thousand dollars for the various things you want to do, and let's hypothetically say the Traffic and Safety Committee comes and says, "We have the following projects we'd like to have done," that would have to come back to the city council, and the city council would actually vote on that appropriation at that time, which would come out of committed fund balance. So I think it gives the council more control over how those funds would be spent, and to direct them specifically to the needs that you feel are important. So there are various levels of fund balance. There's designated fund balance, there's unassigned fund balance, there is committed fund balance. So the committed fund balance would specifically give the city council the ability to appropriate money right from that funding area. You would not actually, from the income area, you would not actually increase the budget at this time. And you don't have to do it next week, you could do it whenever. But I defer to maybe, Judy, if you could speak a little bit about that, please?
Yes. Currently, right now, you don't have any committed fund balance. That's been a reserve. So this is a great tool to use to reserve those funds. Also, with committed fund balance, it is the governing body who makes that decision. And at some point, if there are funds in the committed fund balance, you could also turn that back into unassigned fund balance. But it's, it's been used in other municipalities more as a reserve for other things. So take it from surplus at the end of the year from the general fund, and you can initiate those reserves, so.
Yeah, I appreciate the suggestion, and I'm happy to work on it. As I mentioned, the city administrator, in whatever way it makes the most sense, again, with the goals of setting some money aside for that. And I understand that the goal isn't to increase the budget at this time. So if it makes more sense to do it once we have the audited numbers, that's fine, too. I just don't want this to get set aside. I want to make sure we get it done.
We could actually, we could actually put some money in committed fund balance for what you specifically articulated, because you can always move money out of there if you want to. And again, as has been said, that the committed fund balance is clearly in the purview of the city council. So, you know, we can, I'll, I'll work with the mayor to see if there's some amendment we can, not amendment, excuse me, some motion we can put forward that would allow us to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Johnston?
Well, I guess I'll piggyback off the last comment from Councillor Berman. Yeah, I think two years ago, that was the position I took. It's been suggested by now the city administrator. I was really advocating for the creation of some kind of ordinance that would govern those funds, but I still wholly support the need for it. And likewise, I have several amendments myself that I will get to the administrator as soon as possible. On a different topic, but one that did come up when the superintendent was speaking, really from the outset, and again, not all the city councillors were here at the time. Forgive me if I get the dates wrong, but from the outset of two thousand and twenty-two, when our families at the hotel first came on scene, council was never kept in the loop whatsoever. Can't go back and change time. Really, what I'm just getting at is there seems to be a date on the horizon. I think it's September. I'm not fully informed on that. I see potential issues arising from that. I mean, as the superintendent stated, if those residents can find housing in the city of Saco, I would say it's a pretty big challenge to do so. So I'm really just kind of looking for an update at a later date, where we're at with that. Any knowledge you have from the state, what happened with the funding, what have you? I just, I think it needs to be in the forefront of council, because it could lead to a pretty drastic...
I think the superintendent might have some updates.
So Meg and I had a meeting the other day with Catholic Charities, and I forget the Housing Navigator organization they were working, working on. There were fifteen-nine, Meg, I believe, current students that, that are at the hotel, with twenty-nine of those, I believe, already lined up for placement. It seemed, I want to say, the thought process that the students would be Saco students next year was not a very high possibility. It appeared that apartments that were being found, or any housing that was being found through the agencies, are more in the Lewiston, Waterville, some Bedford housing. But as they looked through Saco, there was really nothing affordable that they could find for families, or available. So affordable and available were two different categories. So it did not seem like many of the current residents at the hotel would be finding permanent housing in Saco. So that's, that's the conversation that we had. The, they are not backfilling any hotel, any, any of the rooms at this time, and the operations were... It was September one, correct? May I go, or September thirtieth? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Set, answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the update. I can only speak for myself, but I just want to, you know, I guess, say, at least for myself, like, if something arises where you need assistance from council, I think that would be nice to have in front of us.
And I think what, you know, we spoke about this at length the other day. And, you know, as, as we stated, that with the students leaving our community, we are not better moving forward from that. Our schools are better now. They brought a sense of diversity. Our staff has worked so hard ramping up to the point of where we are today. To watch some of that change for us is a little bit hard to take. The students have brought so much conversation, just within our own households, about differences in cultures. And I think that, you know, one of the pieces that came from that meeting that I think our team was most proud about was the comments from Catholic Charities about how the Saco School Department and the city of Saco have been so great to work with throughout this project, compared to some of the experiences they've had in other places. And, you know, that's, that's our staff getting the job done, whether that be on the city side, the communication that we've had throughout the city and the schools when there's been a problem. I mean, teachers bussing to the rec with Ryan to make sure that kids have activities. And I think it's, I think we should be really proud about how well it really has gone in this community overall. And they will express that to you from Catholic Charities, of how grateful they are to the efforts of the entire city to make it be so seamless.
Thank you. Councillor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. Just, we haven't had the chance to discuss this. So really, just one more comment on, on this topic. You know, these families and kids have been through a, really a period of uncertainty and transition and violence and a lack of stability. And, you know, they've been here, I don't know, two or three years now. I think twenty-twenty-two they came. And, you know, thank you, and thank all the people in the schools and Catholic Charities and the state who stepped up to provide them some stability and some education and some safety. I think, really, it was, it was, you know, incumbent on our community to do that. And I appreciate all the efforts lots of people put in. This was a state program, the Catholic Charities program. It was not a city program. We are largely in the dark, as anybody listening knows. But I do want to say, just as a human, and as a father, and as a person, it makes me nervous if we're sending these kids into an additional period of uncertainty and transition. And if there's anything the city can do to help them in that transition... And if there's anything the city can do to, to help them in that transition, and to aid them in stability, or, or to preserve the educational gains and the community gains and the integration into our community that, that I know has, has happened in, in these last few years, at least as, as one councillor, I'd really be eager to do so. You know, the idea that we're going to foster, again, you know, a lack of stability and transition on these kids is, is kind of sad to me.
And I guess, you know, while this is probably not necessarily my role to say this, but whether it's the population that we serve at the hotel, or many times our own staff members, affordable housing is needed. I mean, when I'm hiring teachers right now for next year, and many of our new teachers that we are hiring, the reason that they're here is because they have family they can live with. You can't afford an apartment on a starting teacher's salary, and that doesn't even include our support staff. We need affordable housing for the professionals and the families that live in our city and work in our schools, our fire department, our police department. And if we, at some point in time, don't solve that problem, all of us collectively are going to be looking around and saying, "What do we do?" One of the, the things that, that, and again, we did over time is just, probably when we all grew up, went to school, many of the teachers in our schools lived in the community that they served, or next door. Our teachers are commuting 30 to 40 minutes, our new ones, if they don't have family in Problem we've got to solve, and I'm sure there's a lot of creative ways to do it, but sometimes maybe we just need to try step one or step two. And if you ever have any ideas about how to do that, I've, I've certainly got a couple, because you have to start somewhere.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 13, and that is adjournment this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councillor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Edwards. Roll call, vote. Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 7:33, passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone.